So Monday the 16th, that new? George, you got any correspondence?
Uh, no.
How about a direct report?
Direct report we got. So our circulation was down a little bit from July, but it was still very much up over June. So we're really happy to see that. As of right now, we are currently on, now obviously normally July, August, September are three highest circulation months. So that's the months that have the most stuff checked out. But right now, we are on track to pass 100,000 circulations this year if it holds. I don't know if it will. I want it to, because that would be really, really cool. But we will have to wait and see. So we want to keep it above, I think it's 8250. But like I said, usually these are the three highest months. So I don't anticipate it staying up there, but it would be neat if it does. New patron registrations was 63, bringing our total registered patrons to 4974. Given that the 60s has been consistently what we've been doing for the last about six months, give or take, other than the school visits, obviously. I anticipate that by the end of this month, we will pass into 5,000 registered patrons. So really happy about that.
Have a question about circulation.
Yes, sir.
Is that people coming through the door?
Circulation is amount of stuff taken out of the library physically and digitally put together. The people coming in and going out is door count, yes. So 4797, it's slightly down from July, but...
Are all the people coming to the book sale come through the main door?
They are. The problem is that they're also milling in there. So this entire month, the numbers are going to be estimates because there's so many people going back and forth, looking at books, coming back in, going back out. We have people making multiple trips to carry books. They've been buying so much stuff, which has been great. But for the next week, the door count is going to be...
Pretty high.
Well, that's the thing. So for example, on Saturday, when we closed, I believe the door count was like 1250, which, you know...
Where does it count? The first door or the second door?
The first door. So there is a, basically it's an IR beams that stretches across the center of the foyer. And then when that's broken, it's one. And then when it goes back out, it's two. So at the end of the day, we write down the number and then have an Excel sheet that, you know, basically divides everything by two so that we get the true count, or truer count. So for the next week, there's so many people going around in that lobby. We've been trying to mitigate it to get people to not do that as much. But it's just the way that the book sale works, it's nothing we can't stop at 100%. So probably going to ballpark, guess we have 500 here on Saturday. But there's no good way to really tell them hard and fast. The only thing we could do is move the sensor so it's farther towards the door. The problem with that is that direct sunlight messes with the IR receiver. So that's why I put it where I did originally, because that way you'd catch people going to the meeting room space who might not necessarily go into the library proper. But it's far enough away that the sunlight coming through the window wouldn't mess with it. So that's the bad part about the book sale is it gets kind of, some of the numbers get lost on the door count because of just how it's set up. We've been trying to improve the flow, but there's only so much. But good question. Meeting room use was up this month. Unfortunately, it'll go back down again because of the meeting room being taken up by the book sale. Although more of our clubs and community groups are actually electing to just use different parts of the library. We were slightly delayed in starting today due to the Mahjong Club electing to just play in other places in the library instead of taking a two-week hiatus like they do in past years. So that was the scramble we just had.
I see you're going to accommodate.
We're trying to. And then other groups, they just squatter, they want to talk about them though. Then the really cool thing was the internet use on our public computers shot up dramatically in August. So that was really interesting to see. So we had 100 and so, 171 uses. Some of those obviously are the same people repeatedly, but it totaled 102 hours of use.
Were some of those people out-of-state people?
Some of them are, yeah.
Yeah, because I saw quite a few out-of-state plates when I was coming back and forth.
Yeah, we had a couple of instances of biking groups meeting here and using the parking lot as a staging ground.
We don't, we don't care.
It was just one of those things.
They blocked the roads and, Main Road was a night we were on Saturday.
Yeah. But yeah, so that, when people come in to use the computers, if they're not local, we do issue them guest passes. That's part of the unrestricted access to public libraries that we offer. But yeah, so 102 hours of use for a month was really cool. Kids programming, we were really excited about seeing a lot of families, a lot of young ones getting started. I'll let Bonnie talk about that. Murderous Mondays was our biggest one we've had so far with 23 people attending. And we are up to five gentlemen attending the group, so we're very excited, very excited.
Is it a men's group?
It is not. One of my endeavors in starting the book club was I wanted to co-add one, so we're making progress.
But that was a good meeting.
It was a great meeting.
There were more people and more vocal people, not the same ones.
And that was the thing, the discussion we had was really great. I'm really excited to see how tonight's goes. So it'll be fun. I'm excited. I don't know how many people are going to come. And then next month, we're doing something very different. So originally, I was going to be away because I forgot about Columbus Day, because the week of Columbus Day, I'll be on vacation. So we had been discussing doing a random pop-up Halloween read, which going forward, every now and then, I'd like to have a one-off book club that isn't necessarily repeating. It's just kind of like a, let's read this all together as a library. So we're going to do that in October and read Rebecca. And then originally, when I was going to be away, Bonnie was going to chair the book club that week for the discussion. But I'll be there anyways. But she's still more than welcome to chair the discussion. And I'll just throw witty repartee occasionally from the back. We'll see how it goes. But yeah, it's a good time. But if anyone is interested in reading Rebecca with us, it is a classic of literature. And then I'm going to see if we can also have a movie day and watch it on the Saturday after that. But I'm not sure yet, I'll have to double check. That'd be kind of cool.
So the Rebecca, the book Rebecca will be the Monday, Murderous Monday?
Yep, which will be meeting on the 16th as well of October. I've already started it and it's, it's one of those books that makes me remember that I'm the son of a bricklayer. Because it's like, we start reading about the rich folk and it's like, yeah, it really is another way of living, isn't it? But I digress.
I read that a long time ago.
Did you?
Yeah.
It's a great book, it's really cool. It's just very, "Well, I want a manservant, how does one get a manservant?" Oh, nuts, I forgot to add.
Yeah, I read it when I was like a teenager, I was into all the classics.
So I made a small typo there, friends. So the total is supposed to be one below. So the 162 is actually where the X is supposed to be, I apologize for that. So the 162 is total attendance for children's and adult programs together for August.
And what's the 12?
The 12 is the number of programs total. So we had 11 children's programs and one adult program.
Very good.
There were a few scattered sick days for the staff, as well as the assistant director's much-deserved vacation after storytime and the summer programs wrapped up. The staff were able to adapt to the needs of the public and deliver the exec killing services, we expect. We're still having a little bit of a staffing issue due to the continued sick outage. We have two part of the part-timers that are currently on leave, one of whom is scheduled to return this week. The other one hopefully will be next week.
COVID?
No, just other stuff. And then we might need to modify some usage due to one of theirs foot's being broken. So we might have to have her on desk duty for a couple of weeks.
Like lay duty?
Yeah, it's one of those things, like, you know, she was concerned about whether or not she'd be able to work. And I'm like, you know, we're a library. If I need to park you at a desk, we can park you at a desk. So we'll figure out that and we'll go forward. School's back in session. So far, the parents and the children have been behaving admirably, although the SRO did need to speak to one parent who had their car idling in the entranceway right next to the stop sign. So they literally were blocking one's way of egress, but he did talk to him and he moved. Our financial reports have been submitted to Boston for the MBLC, showing full compliance with all state certification requirements. I got it in a month early, so I'm hoping that we will still be in the first batch, because I want my money, our money, your money. And we are also very proud to announce Westport has been selected as the site of the 2024 Southeastern Massachusetts Legislative Advocacy Breakfast, which is scheduled for March 1st, 2024. You can all thank Representative Paul Schmidt for that, because he's been asking for us to host it for years.
What's that involve?
So basically, we're going to be having a light continental breakfast, which I hate the spread every year, because it's basically just like muffins and fruit. It's not like a single protein on the dang table and it irks me. I literally joined the committee four years ago just to try and improve the food.
Does it have yogurt in it?
Not even yogurt, just like, like, you know, to me, it's not a breakfast if there's not eggs and a pancake. Like, or just something, like, you know, toast, sausage. I mean, it's one of those things where it's like, oh, they call it a breakfast and I showed up and I'm like, what are we eating? Like, this is, I apologize.
Can you, can you dress it up because you're hosting?
Oh, it depends on how much money you want to donate for the food, but that's the thing, so...
Can I make a suggestion? In the past, when we went to legislative breakfast, the, and this would be usually up in the Taunton area, the meals were taken care of by the representatives.
Yes.
And I think you might ask Paul Schmidt, since he wanted it here in Westport, whether or not he'd like to put on a little show.
I am pretty sure he will be, because last year, he actually donated the food when it was hosted in Somerset.
I would talk to him.
Oh, we're already...
And, yeah.
Well, you've got to mention the type of food also.
It's true, I'll give him a nudge. He's a farmer, so I mean, like, he's got to have some stuff falling down around, you know, this is one sick pig, it's all I'm asking. Anyway, we don't need that much.
Marty Walsh has $40 million in his account.
Yep, I read that.
Can you believe that?
Yeah, he's keeping his powder dry for something. But I digress. So if anyone would be interested in attending, usually it starts at around eight to try to give the legislators time to, you know, go to other events during the rest of the day. Typically, it's done, I think last year, we were done by 9:30, I think.
It was pretty efficient.
It was. And I don't know, this is a little different, because normally, the only reason that we get it is because last year, they had it in Somerset. And Somerset was the most attendance they've ever had. Typically, us being all the way down here, they felt that there wouldn't be enough, it wouldn't be easy enough traffic due to the fact that this is the legislative breakfast for all of the sales library networks. So it's basically almost all of Bristol County and a sliver of Plymouth, too. So usually, they try to have it more centralized so everybody can drive easier, you know, Foxborough, Taunton, somewhere around there. But since Somerset did so the good last year, and it's basically, you know, not that much farther away from us, like, ah, no, it's happening in Westport. But yeah, I think also part of it was the Westport Friends were one of only four Friends groups, I think it was four, three or four Friends groups last year who did donate to support the breakfast. There was a big drop in donations. A lot of towns and a lot of Friends groups and different libraries were either not donating or actually were afraid of the legality of their donating to the breakfast. So we're trying to do some outreach this year to get around that, too. But yeah, so March 1st, 8 o'clock, Representative Schmidt and Senator Roderick have both already confirmed and RSVP'd. So we have the necessary worthies and then we'll be extending invitations to all of the legislators in the area. Terms of the building, the high school pump, I don't know if you heard, failed. The last week of the month, and the library is forced to close as a result on Tuesday, August 29th, due to lack of running water. Pump was replaced and the library was able to reopen on Wednesday, August 30th. Our next scheduled maintenance project, Lord willing, will be replacing the rubber floor behind the circulation desk.
On the water, are they still running, the bleach and everything, is that done?
No, it's fine. Yeah, the problem, the water was okay, it was just they had to wait for the test to come back clear. And they actually had come back by Thursday, I forget if it was Wednesday night or Thursday night that we got the all-clear. But we decided just out of abundance of caution to just let it kind of sit for the week and then open it back up on Monday. But yeah, we're going to be getting close together to replace the, I don't know if it's replacing or refinishing the rubber floor behind the circulation desk that the staff stands on. The glue kind of came apart in a couple of spots and it wore through. So we got to work on that. And as well as our maintenance technician, Roland Dumas, has put in a request to have plastic rug protectors or runners placed in front of the circulation desk, because people standing there are starting to kind of wear it out.
If you look at it, you can see the difference in the shape.
Yeah. So we'll be looking into trying to either get one that kind of curves like a J shape, so it can take up the whole front of the desk, or two, and just strategically place them where people stand the most.
Just have to be careful of tripping with those.
Yes, and that's the thing. So they make, some of that are tapered, so they try and minimize that as much as they can, so it's more...
The plastic ones are not as bad, because they got those little dipples on the bottom that kind of sink into the curve.
But we're going to be working on that. And our request to have the HVAC replaced has been resubmitted to the town for their inclusion in the five-year plan, as we've been doing for the last four years. So last year, there was talk of putting us onto the town's green energy grant program to have a more energy-efficient system put in. As always, it depends on funding, so we'll wait and see how that goes once the meetings start and I get to go and say how much funded it is having the building with air we can breathe. So, it is true, and the staff are very much appreciative of the care.
Something we've not been doing is making a motion to accept George's report. We should do that.
Yes, I agree. George, are you done?
Anybody have any questions? Okay, I am done.
Motion to accept George's report, somebody want to make? Susan made it, Paula did.
And we should make the motion, no, you can't make the motion ahead. It's motion second and then discussion usually, but that's, but we need to accept it.
I agree. Thank you, Paula.
So summer reading officially ended and I was really happy with, I put all the final numbers, we kind of outnumbered the last one, so... Actually, in August, I had family storytime, actually had more attendance than the babies, because baby toddler time has been the big draw so far. So that was really exciting, I had, and for the final week, I had 28 people, which was really exciting. That was a very crazy day, but it was really fun. The movies did pretty well, so we're going to try that again. I was thinking of doing like a Halloween movie, you know, one week, something like that. We finished the pet photo contest, which was really popular. So we had 289 people come in to vote. You had to vote in the library, so that was good.
Who won?
Her name is Bevy, she's a Beagle.
Beagle?
Yes, they're on the old doghouse display thing, you know, the computers, if you want to see it for second and third. So they got Petco gift cards for first, second, and third place, and those have been picked up, so that was exciting. And the Tojiaon Puppet Band had 144 people. We ended up being inside that day, because the weather wasn't very good, but it was still really fun. That was the first time I'd actually seen them. They're adorable.
There's a reason they had groupies.
Yes, yeah, I think most, they asked who had seen them before and I think most of the people there had, so that was really fun. Storytime is hopefully going to be starting the week of September 26th, but with other people out and then I'm going to be out for surgery for a couple of weeks. So we're trying to figure out whether George will be able to take over for me and things like that. So hopefully, September 26th. The big Halloween program is going to be Touch a Truck, Touch a Truck and Treat, and will be held October 28th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. So I've already talked to the fire department and they will be sending a fire truck and an ambulance over, depending on, you know, their staffing that day. So she said, once it gets closer, she can, there might be a third vehicle, we'll say.
Very nice.
And we were talking about doing, either decorating pumpkins, or George came up with caramel apples, they could...
Poisoned apples.
Poisoned apples.
New food diet and make caramel green, and then it looks like the poisoned apples are still white.
It's pretty cute.
That's the coolest thing I've ever seen. Fully admit, it's completely self-serving, I just want one for myself.
So that is where we are with that. And we were going to, George and I have talked about asking Fowl if they would like to purchase some new shelving for our board books. We have them, they're down on the fore end of the children's section and they're in one of these smaller bookcases that has like the roof on top, kind of. And it's chock full and I have a whole shelf of donations that I can't put out yet that have come in for the book, through the book sales. So we're hoping to get something bigger. I did find one, it looks basically the same, but it has a third row of shelving on it.
So it's slightly taller than the corresponding shelves, but it's...
Well, other than that, it would take up basically the same footprint. Yeah. Our board book circulation has been steadily increasing, so we do want to have a place to put those. And I think that is it.
Can we have a motion to accept the assistant director's report?
My second.
All in favor? Huh?
Who made the motion?
I seconded it.
She seconded it?
She made the motion, she seconded.
Oh, okay.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay.
Just for the permanent record, when I say poison, do not... So we're all on the same page, I don't want anything getting out into the community.
Friends update, you are?
Okay, I was at the meeting and they are a very jolly group.
I'd just like to apologize for the size of the font in the email. Something went wrong there.
They're getting a pretty good membership renewal rate, but the top number, I think it's about 200 members?
It's about 230.
Yeah, okay. They would like to increase that and there was discussion about publicity and promotion of the group and programs and how to do it and where to do it. And there was discussion of logistics about the book sale. And one thing they did that I forgot to put in the written report is that they're having a thank you potluck for the volunteers for the book sale, which they've done. They used to have a full meal, I think this is just desserts, which is still pretty darn good. And the other big news from the Friends is Sue Sekay got married and she's now Sue Burns.
We have two Sue Bs now, so that's going to be very, we used to call them Sue S and Sue B.
Yeah.
That's going to be a problem now.
She's also on the...
I noticed it because she changed, she hadn't officially announced it, but she changed her email signature. So I was like, Sue, is that a good thing or a bad thing? Like, the Sekay was her married name, but it got very complicated, so...
Very good.
The other thing is just we're now adding the two extra museum passes, too.
Right, 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 sorry, sorry.
It's okay.
The New England Aquarium Pass and the Children's Museum of Fall River are being added. Children's Museum in Boston was never used, right?
Yeah, it got discontinued, which was really sad, because somebody came in to use it, the week after we dropped it. That's how it goes.
They just said it was Fall River? That's a, it's a good museum.
Oh, no, we didn't have the pass at the time, but no, we gave them the list of all the other libraries that did have it so they could go and get it from one of the other, one of our colleagues. But yeah, New England Aquarium is already here and up and running. The Fall River Pass has not come in yet, but should be here sometime in the next couple of weeks. The one I'm very upset about is the State Parks Pass. We did not have it this year and all of my efforts at communication with DCR have gone unanswered. So I'm going to be working on trying to make sure we have it for next year, because I emailed them and called multiple times and every time I've called, it's gone to voicemail and they have never called me back. So I'm going to be working, trying to make sure we do get that pass, because people were asking for it and it's free. Just send it out to libraries, it's just they never got it to us this year, so...
And anyone who's over 60 can pay $10 and have it for a lifetime?
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're way behind.
Yeah, and that's the thing.
Because a friend, Sue, who meets with us, she sent her check in and she thought she would get it in like by June. And as of today, she still doesn't have it.
Yeah. So I know they are very short-staffed, but at least a word would be useful. There are other libraries that did have it and it was circulating. So just for whatever reason, we never got ours and we never received any communication about it. So we'll be working on that for next season.
My daughter had called, the last week of August, they were going up to the aquarium and she called and the pass wasn't going to be available until September. So they went anyway and someone in line had one from their library that they weren't using.
Oh, okay.
And it's 50% off the cost, which is really good.
It's one of those things that it's a very expensive pass. I think it's either 600 or 700 for the year. And it runs from September through August, so that's why ours did not start until September 1st. But the discount is really good, so that's kind of the trade-off on it. So it's one of those passes that I don't mind paying a little bit more on that one personally, because it does go to help, you know, support the animals and food for them and all that kind of stuff. So it's not just theoretical cost, it's real. Especially when you still had to pay to take care of all the animals straight through COVID and everything when everyone else was shut down. But yeah, it's already been checked out a bunch of, a couple of times so far.
I got a new penguin up there, too, I think, so...
That's true. Personally, I always like going up to see like cuttlefish, that's my favorite.
Paul, do we have to prove the next, the assistant?
Yeah, that's a new VA zone, it's a new position, should we?
Except the Friends report, then.
Sure, why not?
Well, we do it...
A motion?
Motion by Paula, second by Sue.
Okay.
Should we do the assistant director's report as well?
We did.
We did? Okay. Trustee subcommittee updates. Safety, I've given George a file, he's going to print it and give Sue, him and myself a file. What, and then we'll discuss it over. The state has a very good policy on emergency responses, there's like 25 items in it. And it's word for word what all the libraries are using, so we don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Is that what you already sent me?
Yeah.
Okay, I already had George print that out for me.
Okay.
I did?
Yeah. When he first sent it to me back in June?
It's worth a progress.
Yeah.
Well, we've had some interruptions.
Yeah. So it's pretty basic. What I think we need to do is tailor a few different ones for us.
Yeah.
Because that's only emergency procedures. We still need some other things for safety, I think, but...
Yeah, and I think there's more in there than what we need.
Yes, absolutely.
Now, our concern was the door, that was...
That would be rolled into that.
Good.
I have a list here, I don't know where I did the... It's here somewhere.
Only since you've mentioned it have I noticed that that door is difficult.
Yeah. I put a list of things together, I want to go over them with George as well, but the door is on it and that's from the safety committee. But I'll just go now, the amplifier and related work, the walkway, we still waited on some prices from four different contractors on. And I haven't done anything with the wish you well type thing yet, because that's going to be with Diamond in the spring.
Maybe.
And there's a lot of other things I listed that we've talked about. And somebody gave me some advice and I think I might take it, I'd like to get the opinions of the board, though, that we reach out to, what's his name, Hugh, Hugh Morton, and put a few other things on our list besides just that.
Why not get everything together and then go see Hugh?
Well, that's what I'm talking about, I've got a list of things.
I know Hugh and Diana from the building, the building expansion committee. And they're both very gracious.
Well, the thing I was thinking of is, we've been on this HVAC system at the town for four years, this is going to be another four years. It would end up having breakdowns and then emergency repairs, which are very expensive. I thought of including the HBA system in it, because it's going to save us town money, it's more energy efficient. The door, and it's a list of other things, that we just put the whole laundry list on there.
And they would put it under one umbrella?
Yes. And, you know, my comment was to, you know, balance, the balancing account will be used for upkeep for the building and grounds of the library, because there's any money left over.
They're, right now, they're doing the HVAC at the Fall River Historical Society.
I saw that in your paper.
I get weekly updates. Now, that's an undertaking.
Yeah. Yes, but this room would have to be, I think, a separate entity from the rest of the building?
This is on a separate...
Oh, it is it? Okay, I wasn't sure. But anyhow, I'll go with the safety committee, some of the things I put down. But my thought was to just put a whole list of stuff together, put a number with it and he may approve half of it or all of it or none of it.
Who is Hugh?
Hugh Morton, he donated, how much did he, he built the addition of libraries?
He represents the Manten Foundation. His wife is the daughter of Sir Edwin Manten. And they, we had a member of the board who is his sister. And he asked her one day, what do you need at the library? People give to people. And he's very generous, especially in the area.
He's donated to a lot of causes, like, he donated $25,000 to help us approve the water system into VFW. All you got to do is ask him.
Well, and it's local, so it's...
Keep it in town. So that's what I thought, I'd put a laundry list together, we can go over it at the next meeting and then I'd give him the letter, because I'm waiting on prices for this and prices for that. By the time we get everything together, it's going to be time gone by again.
So if we have a benefactor, it's likely to actually happen?
Our expansion happened.
Yes.
So is there an endowment or you're asking for a donation?
The Manten Foundation...
He has to give away so much money every year, but he still has a donation he has.
Yeah, I think it was, it was 35 million at the time, but...
They founded the AMITI, is it, insurance company?
AMI.
AMI, TI, or something like that. Amica.
Amica. Amica.
Amica, I'm sorry. Amica. They were the founders of that.
But they've been very generous with Children's Hospital.
And they do that all over the country, not just here.
Friends Academy.
Are they Westport locals?
Hugh's from Fall River. He's a Fall River guy. Morton, Judge Morton.
Oh, yeah, Morton Middle School.
And, yeah. And their daughter just moved into town in the past few years, one of the daughters. So this is their place. Well, for the area, not just Westport.
Well, I know what we're doing. We're gonna put a plaque up at three at the meeting. I don't want my name up there. I don't want my name showing up.
Well, we did put a plaque in the community room.
Okay, so that's where I stand with that stuff. How we get together, get how few we have.
And they do like to be sort of anonymous. That's their choice.
So that's what I say on camera.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Okay, long range plan.
We're waiting on George and Bonnie, who are beavering away no doubt on important.
We got the first pass on it. We just have to kind of go back over it again and kind of just boil it down a little bit better for the next meeting.
Okay, so when it's at a point where the committee can see it, then just let me know and we'll pull together a meeting. We don't, I don't think we have a meeting scheduled. I think we're waiting to hear from the two of you.
That would be tomorrow. Did I just write that down? I thought, no, I thought I wrote it down.
You do this in your spare time?
Let me know.
Okay, do business. Mr. George, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
No?
No.
Anybody have anything to do business? Old business, medium and policy. I said I would have something together and get mailed out. I gave it to George yesterday, Saturday, asked him to look it over before I sent it out to everybody. So when he finishes looking over, we'll send it out to everybody. I put one together. I think Laura has seen it. We addressed some of the issues that we've talked about, pay or not pay and stuff like that, so it's in there. We can look it out and hash it over. Next meeting.
Sounds good.
Other topics not anticipated. Looks like it's gonna be a short meeting.
Get out of here before the room starts.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, second. All in favor? First, Bonnie. Susan.
Okay.
All in favor?
I got just shy of 12:45.